Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Cavan.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent document. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 6, 2013. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held April 9, 2013. Item C is approve traffic signs at the following locations. Stop here on red at Southwest 4th and Wilson. Stop sign on New Street Grace Way at Northwest 12th. Stop sign on New Street Grace Point Drive and Northwest 12th. Stop sign on New Street Cinderella Lakes and 34th Street. And no left turn at Rent Renita Way and Wimberly Creek. Item D is approve a memorandum agreement for FY 2014 with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and the U.S. Geological Survey for Stream Gauging. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012-2013 in the amount of $4,735,706.17 carryover from May 20, 2013 meeting. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012-2013 in the amount of $1,452,173.
Make a motion to accept.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussions, everybody get their questions answered on all this stuff? If so, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Item number three is review, discuss, and receive citizen input and comments regarding fiscal year 2013-2014 budget as required by 11 Oklahoma statutes, 17-208, 1992. This is on page 142 of your packet.
Mayor and council, the fiscal year 2013-14 budget is presented tonight for a public hearing as required by the Municipal Budget Act. The total proposed budget is $89.7 million and complies with all legal requirements. No fund balance was used by the general fund or MPWA to balance those funds.
Okay.
Everybody feels confident in light of the storms that we've had, tornadoes, that we'll still be able to maintain? Or need to amend the budget or make any changes you feel confident will?
We're not recommending any changes to the budget now. We need to get the budget adopted. But there will be significant amendments to the budget as we go along, as the FEMA funds and this and that come in. We'll be watching our revenue stream, obviously, as a result of this on the sales tax side and the MPWA or the utility side. Probably more particularly, watching that pretty closely and see how that goes through the first part of the fiscal year and then make any recommendations then.
Okay. Do we need to buy any new vehicles and such after this last storm? I know we're down a few vehicles.
We've gotten beat pretty hard with, we've beaten pretty hard with the police side.
Yeah.
There's vehicles in the budget for police. It's, you know, it's possible we may have to buy some more. Funds are there to do that if we need to with the public safety tax. How many we need at this point, you know, I don't know.
It's probably the tires we're gonna need the most.
We're buying tires.
Yes.
We're buying lots of tires, I'm sure.
I think we had some flood out and such too, I think, through all the flooding and.
They have.
Yep. How did the new SUVs fare in the flooding? Did they, were they tall enough, chief? Did the new SUVs do pretty well with the flooding? Well, I make a motion to approve the budget then.
This is just a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
If there's any comments from the public.
Would anyone like to speak on our budget? No one signed up for it, but we'll open it up. Anybody? There's no one on the public, so declare the public meeting closed. Thank you. At this time, we'll recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number four is consider approval of FY 2013-2014 annual budget and adopt resolution number 76413.
I make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider awarding GeoBond issue project number five, reconstruction of Broadway Avenue from northeast 5th Street to northeast 18th Street utilizing the base bid of concrete pavement to Silver Star Construction in the amount of $2,601,637.45.
Mayor and council, we solicited bids for the 5th GeoBond project and we received two bids. Staff had recommended awarding the bid to Silver Star Construction, they were the low bid. The other bid received was Haskell Lemons. And we also recommended the base bid as well, with the difference being less than $41,000. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Okay, let's talk about start times. You guys are covered up because you're already carrying debris. Can we postpone, I mean, go ahead and do the contract and?
We talked about that with Steve this afternoon. We are recommending to go ahead and award the bid. We won't issue a work order to Steve until we're through with debris and 12th Street is closer to finished or finished.
Finished, yeah, okay.
So, hopefully that's, hopefully that's gonna be 60 days, I don't know for sure how long.
So when you guys are ready, basically, that's fine, okay.
Until get current traffic out of town.
Yeah, I agree. There's, there's, there's no, there's no reason not to.
Two of these streets already tore up and.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely, that's what we intended to do.
Okay, that was my next question. Good, all right. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. Would you call for the vote if there's no other comments or questions? We'll sign that.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider an increase in matching funds from $15,000 to $30,000 paid to Metro Transit in FY 2012-2013 in support of the non-emergency medical transportation. And as you guys know, this is transportation that we provide to our senior citizens here. And I guess they're asking for more money.
What it boils down to is we've pledged and we've paid about $15,000 a year, a year for several years. And from what I'm able to understand from them, they didn't bill us last year. I think that was just an error on their part. We have been billed for our $15,000 for this fiscal year and we'll be paying that. We believe it's a valuable service to our seniors for medical trips that they take. They have about 800 trips a year that they're providing that we had no way of providing before. And it's a small amount of money for grant money that we give to COTSA to help them offset rent funds that they get to operate it. So basically, what I'm asking to do is pay $30,000 this year to make up for the $15,000 we didn't pay last year.
Okay.
I'd so move.
Second. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I guess this is a great program. Would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider the Moore Vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, number 39, located in the northwest quarter of Section 12, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of northeast 27th Street and east of northeastern Avenue. From urban residential, low density to light commercial, application by Bison Development LLC, Greg McAllister, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7.0. This is in Ward 2.
Mayor and council, items number 7, 8, and 9 on your agenda are companion items. This property is located south of northeast 27th Street on the east side of Eastern Avenue. The property is zoned A2, it is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop parcel as a single-family residential addition with the frontage along Eastern Avenue being reserved for the C2 neighborhood commercial uses. Public water is located along the west side on northeastern Avenue, it will be extended through the property. Public sewer is available in the north and east of the property lines and again will be extended through the property. Access is provided by northeastern Avenue with all curb cuts for the commercial lots being reviewed for approval at the time of building permit submittal and knowing that the curb cuts to eastern will be limited. There is no flood plain located on the property. The site does naturally drain from, to the south and the east. A drainage study will be required with the final plat to determine the need and/or for the location of onsite detention. This application for single-family residential does comply with the Moore Vision 2020, although a comprehensive plan amendment is required for the neighborhood commercial request. Because this property fronts along eastern Avenue, which is a four-lane urban arterial roadway, the plan does support the development of underutilized frontage to a commercial land use. So staff does recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. The plat includes 46 residential lots on 13 acres. The commercial area encompasses two acres along eastern. On May 14, Planning Commission meeting several residents that, but this property did express their concerns over drainage affecting the homes to the south. City staff has already been in contact with the developer and his engineer to discuss different ideas and requirements for drainage and detention. Staff does recommend approval of these three applications with the understanding that drainage calculations and plans are required with the final plat submittal. And that depending on what the drainage calculations are, will determine the need for detention, onsite detention.
Okay, so we don't know this yet?
We don't. At the preliminary plat stage, they are not required to turn in drainage calculations or plans.
But you still have the power to say no on this project, right, if it's not?
Absolutely. Whenever the final plat comes before Planning Commission and the city council, if they have not adequately addressed the concerns in regards to drainage or detention, then either of the bodies have the right to decline acceptance.
I did receive two phone calls about this, about the drainage, and it sounds like that was the big concern at the Planning Commission meetings. One of the gentlemen spoke with Mr. McAllister in reference to that. So just know that they are calling and be curious to see what, to ensure that it's gonna be adequate. And they indicated that there was a home that was recently just flooded because of all of the torrential rain that we had on Friday. So that's unusual, but just to ensure that our storm, so our drainage can handle it.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with that. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any, there's no one signed up, anyone wanna speak on this issue? Okay, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider rezoning application number 900, located in the northwest quarter of Section 12, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. From A2 Suburban Agricultural District to R1-C2 to Single Family Dwelling District Neighborhood Commercial District and approve ordinance number 74613, application by Bison Development LLC, Greg McAllister, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7.0. This is also in Ward 2.
I have a motion that we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, anybody wanna speak on this item? Would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is the last of these three items. Consider the preliminary plat for the Avondale addition located in the northwest quarter of Section 12, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of southeast 27th and east of eastern Avenue. Application by Bison Development LLC, Greg McAllister, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7.0. This is also still in Ward 2.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Thank you, vote. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, and I just wanna say thank you very much for bringing your development to Moore. Item number 10 is consider the final plat for Belmar North, Section 2, located in the northeast quarter of Section 32, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being south of southeast 34th Street and west of Sooner Road. Application by Belmar Golf LLC, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7 to 1, or excuse me, 7.0. This is in Ward 1.
Mayor and council, this property is currently zoned R1 as a PUD for single-family residential community. This plat includes 115 residential lots with a density of 3.9 homes per acre. Primary access will utilize Sooner Road with a secondary access point at Indian Hills Road through the existing Belmar Development. No curb cuts will be approved for access to Sooner Road and the plat must be noted with no, limits of no access. There is no flood plain located on this property and detention has been provided with the ponds that are currently located in the Belmar Golf Course Development. This is a gated community with private streets and public water and sewer will be extended through the development. This plat is in compliance with the approved preliminary plat and staff recommends approval of the plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one, and it may or may not relate to this. There's a gentleman here maybe a month ago that brought up something about curbs and the, how they were being installed or cut or whatever. Anybody get to check on that?
We did, yes. In that particular location, because the streets are private, I mean, that's, it probably doesn't look the best, but they are private. So really, it's up to the homeowners association to police that. As far as the other developments around town are concerned, I don't know if we have any existing in town. We do, again, it does not look good necessarily, but it does protect the integrity of our streets. It would probably just be up to you guys if you would like to update the standards as to not allowing it or continue to allow it or how you feel about that.
It's actually better for the integrity of the gutter section of the drainage system because they're not disturbing it. They're just making a soft cut aesthetically, it doesn't look the same.
Yeah.
But I think what happened in that subdivision, there would, there'd been two builders in that subdivision, then they started selling lots to another building firm. They did it in a different way, but actually with the same process. But they do not disturb the gutter section where we have stagnation and the roadway. It's really better for the life of the street. Once you notice older residential neighborhoods, there's a pond, a lot of driveways, it's because they carry that gutter section out. They do not get proper compaction, therefore it settles in time.
So, I just remember that gentleman's concerns were just, I think.
Aesthetic.
Yes. But y'all looked at it and it's okay?
Well, I mean, yeah, it's.
I don't want, if it's.
It's okay, but it doesn't look the same in the normal driveway.
What we call that is aesthetics.
Right.
Right.
That's correct.
We leave it the way it is, why we are kinda guaranteeing the integrity of the roadway that's already there? If we try to do something different, why we don't have that guarantee?
I guess my question would be, is there any process that protects it as well, that looks better? Do you know Stan, is there, is there not?
To me, there's no difference from that application than the others that have occurred. We've got several of those in Oak Ridge, this is still 34th and Santa Fe, they're in several subdivisions. But this concrete finisher just turns its radius of its curves, they're offset, they're inset from the existing curb and gutter. And then he's got a little, it's just different. It doesn't look the same as the other gutter sections in the neighborhood.
Well, I just remember when the citizen was here and brought it up, we were all, oh, I can't believe that. And now we're thinking, well, it's okay. So, I mean, if you guys are happy with it, then you guys, us, whoever.
There, but it is private streets, right? So they can basically.
In Belmar, these are private streets, so it's really up to the homeowners association.
Okay.
Whatever the development.
Make a motion to approve it.
Does the practicality outweigh the aesthetics?
Is that, you mean it's really ugly?
Yeah.
I mean, that's probably for each individual to answer themselves.
Okay.
But I will say that even without us policing it, we don't have a lot of these around. Only certain builders will do it and it's just probably the way that they prefer to do it. So even without policing it, they don't, they're not everywhere.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Who made the motion?
I did, Mark did.
And I second it.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. How you asked that question, I like that, that was cool. Item number 11 is consider awarding bid number 1213-012, access control system for the City of Moore Public Safety Center to the lowest and most responsible bidder, information systems.
This is, it should be that bid is for audiovisual, not the access control. The bid number's right, but the name for it is wrong.
Okay, it's for what now?
It's for audiovisual systems.
Okay, hold on, Randy, can we go ahead on that or do we need to?
The bid number is right.
Okay, is the bid number right?
The bid number is right.
Okay, all right, we're good to go.
That's the bid.
The access control, so it's not, it's not the access control, it's audiovisual, which includes TVs, projectors, sound systems for, for the public safety building.
The access control, so it's not, it's not the access control, it's audiovisual, which includes TVs, projectors, sound systems for, for the public safety building. Including the courtroom, the emergency operations center. The lowest bidder was Audiovisual Designs. They are a local company right across the street. We've had several business with them in the past and been happy with their business, so we'd recommend that we go with them as the lowest bidder.
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you, both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Is the only thing correct in that, just the bid number?
The numbers are right.
So what do you ask?
Everything else is wrong.
Commendations right to the title.
Just the title was wrong. However, the documentation that was provided with the council's information was correct. It showed the firms and so forth that bid and.
All those are correct, yes.
Yeah, and that's on page, I think, one sixty-five, so.
Yeah.
Or something.
All those were correct, those are the ones that did bid.
Right.
Out of, out of the, Harold, what, eleven, twelve that we sent out, we received back three bids.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion, please?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, motion is approved. Item carries. Item number twelve is consider awarding a contract for disaster debris monitoring services based upon received requests for proposals and waiving competitive bidding pursuant to section seven dash two oh five A dash seven contractual services of a professional nature of the City of Moore Municipal Code. Now, my first question has to go to Randy. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but can we legally do this, waiving competitive bidding?
The way we've done this yesterday.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, we sent out a request for proposals for the disaster debris monitoring services Thursday, I believe, and took the proposals this morning. By nine o'clock, we received six proposals from firms. Stan and I interviewed three of those firms by telephone this afternoon. We interviewed True North Emergency Management Services, Thompson Consulting Services, and Executive Recovery Group. We looked at all six of the proposals, and there's probably any of those six, I think, could do a good job with this. We, after interviewing the three firms, were recommending Executive Recovery Group for this contract.
Steve, what exactly will they be doing?
They're going to be doing the monitoring, which is the, basically, watching what debris is loaded at the sites and making sure that the debris that's loaded on our trucks or the contractors' trucks is eligible debris. They'll monitor it as it's weighed to make sure, because we're paying the contractor by weight, make sure the weight is appropriate. They'll, it'll go to the landfill, it'll be weighed again and looked at again. There's, it's, it's basically monitoring to make sure that the debris that we're picking up is eligible debris, and we're, we're only paying for what FEMA allows us to pay for, basically, is what it boils down to.
Gotcha.
When, we've done this the last, well, the last several storms, all, all through the years, we've done this. We've always done this, basically, with in-house help, either our people and/or a combination of the contractors' people. Basically, this technology that's available now out there is relatively new since our last major disaster. It's all electronic rather than all a bunch of paper receipts for the loads that go out to the, to the landfill, so. In discussing it with our contractor, we felt like it was, and FEMA folks, that it would be a better way, better mousetrap, if you will, to make sure that the debris monitoring is done correctly, appropriately, and with, to FEMA's requirements.
This is basically the mechanism by which we get reimbursed by FEMA, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
If the monitoring is not going right, and we're not, or there's loads in question or whatever, then we wouldn't get, potentially wouldn't get reimbursed for it, yes.
They'll be able to easily, I guess, retrieve data, you know, we're audited two or three years from now.
And that's exactly right. Before, whenever we've done this, it's been papers, boxes full of papers of, of tickets and reports and all that sort of thing of paper. We haven't had any problems in the past, but it's time-consuming, a lot of work to do, whereas the electronic way of doing this is, is much simpler, easier, less paper, and very particularly, as you said, three or four years, it'll be three or four years before somebody from FEMA or the federal government's here to audit us, and we'll basically be able to hand them a DVD of, of all of it and say, here it is.
And they'll take care of this expense, of course.
FEMA hits an eligible reimbursement from FEMA, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve a staff's recommendation for the contract.
All right. Thank you, thank you, both. We have a motion and a second. Anybody want to speak on this issue? There's no one signed up. If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. We have an addendum that was placed on here thirty-first of May, two o'clock. Item two, twelve point one is consider adoption of resolution number seven seven three one three authorizing the City of Moore to remove debris from private property in the City of Moore and the city manager of the City of Moore to request public assistance from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for such removal.
Mayor, this is the first step we need to take in the process of PPDR, which is private property debris removal. In other words, ultimately going onto private property with rights of entry to be able to get rid of debris. There's a particular process and things that FEMA needs to see from us. Before we get that approval, we don't, we'll get that, but it just hasn't come quite yet. This is the first step of that, the resolution here. You all adopting that, and then we send off a letter to FEMA requesting it, which has the resolution, and Randy, there was something from the State Health Department and the Attorney General's Office. We've got those in terms of the documentation that we need to present to FEMA. Once that happens, then we'll begin, begin to implement the ROE or the right-of-entry process. There's a lot of activity, a lot of interest in that out there. We're going to try to get that started as soon as possible, but we've got to go through the steps, appropriate steps, before we can do that.
Make a motion that we approve.
All right, thank you.
Before we move forward, I had a quick question. I know a lot of the wording in the resolution is something that we have to put in there, but with regards to paragraph five, are there any circumstances that you all see arising where we might have to go in without permission onto anybody's property?
Well, yes, I mean, it's possible at the end, if at the very end of this, whenever there may be a half dozen or two or three, for that matter, properties that have been abandoned, nothing's happened with those properties, and we've gone through every effort we can to try to get ahold of these people, see where they're at, what the problem is, that we'll go in through the city's authority to abate nuisances. Before, when we did this in ninety-nine, I believe in two thousand and three, we gave additional notice to people, gave notice to people that your house or your property's been condemned. If you don't get to us and do something by X date, give them, you know, thirty days or something, plenty of time for them to do it, but if they don't do it ultimately in the end, then we would come on.
Okay, so that would be implemented if we've exercised, we've done everything that we can, we're just not getting response, anything from anyone?
I can't think of any other situations where we would go on without the property owner's permission, because we don't, we don't want that liability, for one thing. If the property owner is talking to us, working with us, and all of that, and they're not quite ready for an ROE, or they don't want us on there, that's fine. Unless and until at the very end of this, there's, you know, three walls standing on some house somewhere that somebody wants to try to keep that clearly can't be built back or something like that.
Last time, I believe, we declared them a health issue and an emergency situation.
We did.
Where we would go in and basically take it down, and then we build it to the tax rolls, but they can't build it until they take their taxing or whatever.
It's a taxing. I think at the end, in ninety-nine, we didn't have but.
Maybe two?
A handful, two or three, maybe.
Okay.
No, that, that were this way.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor.
Make a motion to approve.
I think we, we have a motion, don't we?
We have a motion.
I don't think we have.
Do you have a second? I will second it then.
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and recon, excuse me, and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item thirteen is the consented docket, there's consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held May sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars, twenty cents. This is a carryover from May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen meeting. Also approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of seven hundred forty thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars, seventy-seven cents.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you. Thank you, both. Everybody get their claims questions answered? Any notes or changes in the minute? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is consider approval of FY two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen annual budget in adopt resolution number two three four thirteen, and this is on the public works side, so.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number fifteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held May sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Item B is approve payment of a general liability settlement in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to Ronnie Bigwip individually and as a father and next friend to Tajah Bigwip for claim number CJ two zero one one dash one 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 five L, authorize payment on the property tax rolls and supplement the budget accordingly. Item C is approve payments of a general liability settlement in the amount of one hundred six thousand, two hundred dollars, excuse me, to Summit Quality Homes Incorporated and Pepper Mackey Building Company LLC for claim number CJ two zero one two dash one five four dash L, and authorize placement on the tax rolls and supplement the budget accordingly. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and thirteen in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars, sixty-two cents. This is a carryover from May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen meeting. Also approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item sixteen's roll call?
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Scott Singer?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Here.
And Terry Cavanagh?
Here.
Item seventeen's the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Would you call a roll, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes. Item eighteen, consider and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a chair of the authority. Anybody interested?
I'd make a motion that we reelect Terry Cavanagh.
I will second that.
Any other comments? Would you call a roll, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes. Item nineteen, consider and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations to elect a vice chair of the authority. Who's our current pastor?
Kathy.
Kathy?
Mr. Roberts, would you be willing, be willing?
I can do that.
I will nominate David Roberts.
We'd like the easy one.
Second.
He emailed you, Terry, so I had to get back to him.
Would you call a roll, please?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes. Item twenty, consider and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations to elect a secretary of the authority.
Nominate Jason Blair.
I'll second that.
Who?
Jason.
Jason Blair.
Jason.
I didn't hear it either, it's like.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Blair.
I want to be funny.
I'm not second.
I'll second it.
Oh, you got a second, all right. Would you call a roll, please?
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-one is new business. Let the record reflect that all the members are still present that were present before. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have a couple people signed up to speak. Ralph Mo, and I'm not sure how to say this, Malazo, or it's Marshall. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't read it. Oh, I guess I could put my glasses on. I'm sorry, can I speak?
Oh, yeah, that's better. Yeah, I'm Ralph Marshall. Ten forty-eight Northwest Tenth Street here in Moore. Been here about twenty-five years. My wife is in the audience with me, and we're wanting to put in a storm shelter. But the one I want to put in, the ordinance doesn't allow in the front, in the front of the house.
Yes, sir.
This is the, can I approach?
Sure. Start on that end, and we'll pass it around.
That's the one I want to put in. And this will be the location in front of my house. And what I have here is a picture of the one that is allowed by ordinance. And here's one that is not allowed by ordinance. And which one would you want? Anyhow. What I want, what I want to do is I have a vinyl fence, and I want to cut a hole in the fence. Put the storm shelter in, in the backyard protruding through about three feet into my front yard. And then I'll put the fence back to the storm shelter, and up across the top of it, and back down, and continue the fence road. This is what I'd like to do. But I need a variance on this ordinance.
Will, will it not, will it not fit completely in your backyard?
Pardon?
Will, will it not fit completely in your backyard?
Yes, it will, but I don't want it back there.
Okay, I got you, I got you. I understand, I got you, okay.
For safety's sake.
Sure, okay.
My wife has diabetes, she has neuropathy, she can't walk, so, and I would have to go through a locked gate to get back there.
Gotcha.
Mr. Eady, why would we put the ordinance in place to not permit them in the, what brought it down?
It was because of a, a lot of complaints about these kind, put in the front yard and just the aesthetics of how they look. We had, we had quite a few of them. We had, we had quite a few of them built before we changed the ordinance to, that were just a lot sticking out in the yard and not very attractive in the front yard, frankly.
Mr. Ham, what, what they had done and, and people had gone by and basically just taken the storm shelter, put it in what looked like maybe a foot, not very far at all. And they had this big chunk of metal just sitting in the middle of their front yard. And it, it looks, it looked horrendous. And so, you're just trying to ensure that people.
So that's the reason the ordinance was?
Yeah, yes. That, that's the reason, yeah.
No safety reason, just.
It was for the aesthetics.
Well, pass the law.
Yeah. Well, there was, we, we looked at different, uh, the different, um, storm shelters and came to the conclusion that people just weren't putting them in, well, not necessarily putting them in right, but there were comparable, uh, comparable, I guess, uh, storm shelters that they could use, but I don't know if it was a pricing deal or just particular style, but, you know, it, it didn't seem to us at that time, the ones that we were talking about, that we were trying to keep people putting in, that there was no reason that they couldn't go with something else that, you know, what was better, you know, or, or as functional, so.
You know, I've just, it's interesting that you brought this up. I've received a telephone call today. Was it from you?
It wasn't, no.
Okay, well, I didn't know if it was a different person. So somebody called and they're wanting to put one, uh, they said slanted. And I guess what we have to put in now is it has to be flat.
Has a slanted front.
And they, uh, is there anything that's? Obviously, we can't do it, so we'd have to, to, I guess, change the city ordinance to allow that.
See, the only part of the storm shelter beyond the front side of the fence would be the slanted part.
Right.
The rest of it would be in my backyard behind my fence.
There's a, there's a process in the code to go through, which is the board of adjustment, and, and they look at these kinds of cases and, and can, can, can provide the relief if it's determined that it's okay.
Yeah, if, if there's a medical issue, I don't mean, I don't, I'm not going to sit there and deny anybody to put in a storm shelter. So having two big ones in two weeks or whatever, but if, if there's a reason that she can't get to it because she has diabetes, then it needs to go to the board of adjustment and let them okay.
I think we, I think we made that information available to the.
They're reasonable people, being there.
And the person that, that Mark's talking about contacted me as well. It's on, it's in the old part of, it's over on Northwest Twenty-Fourth Street. Um, and they were essentially asking the same question. Their yard is to, their backyard is fairly small and it would be, they, they preferred this type of shelter, that they were, their, their thought was also that they would decorate the yard in such a way as to, as to aesthetically make it more attractive to the eyes instead of, instead of being just.
Some of the ones we got some real severe complaints on were decorated fairly well, too, and.
And I'll take the heat on the deal. I led the charge on, on putting them in the backyards only, so, you know, that may not have been a good idea looking back, but I've done a lot of stupid things in my life. So, and I, I tried to correct them once. I learned what they are. So, you know, I think it should go to the board of adjustment and I think they should let you have them.
And are you familiar with how to do that?
No.
I'm not either, but we'll find out.
Elizabeth will help you.
We don't know either.
Yeah, I don't know.
With that, there's a procedure.
The curb cop?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, the curb cop, yes.
I've got a curb in front of my house that has buckled up not like that.
She's, she's your lady.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hey, sir, your pictures are over here, over here on this side. Pictures right here. Thank you, sir.
Rebecca Parsons.
My name is Rebecca Parsons and we live at eleven thirteen South Morgan Drive. And basically, I'm up here for the same reason he is. But we can't get something that big into our backyard. We have about seven foot, maybe eight foot on one side and about the same on the other. And the people that I've talked to, there's a big crane that has to lift it in there. We can't put one in. Our garage is converted, so we can't do one of the flat top saves. And my best friend, who lives across the street, has one. Her garage is converted. We were about up to our knees Friday night in water. By the time the storm stopped, there was about four inches of headroom la- left in that flat safe. That's not a safe. We may have been safe from the tornado, but if it had jammed, I mean, there was no way to get out. So, my concern is the same as the previous gentleman's. I want someplace safe to put my family. And the slope front that have been declared, you know, not in code, is kind of our only option, I feel, because everything else allows in so much water.
I, I think, Mr. Eady, we, we said that you could use a slope top, right? They just have to be put in the ground, right?
Right.
They just can't be a certain height.
Over six inches or whatever.
They, from the ground to the top of the, that's not including the vent. The company that I spoke with sent me a blueprint. And it comes, it comes up, the concrete itself, uh, from the first seam comes up, the way I read it, about twenty-four inches. Then you have the vents. Um, I don't know if you'll allow me to pass around a, I mean, the, uh, cellphone, but the pictures. I mean, I've seen several in our neighborhood. And yes, they are not really appealing. But I would like my family to be safe.
Have, have you looked at the other companies that make the models that would be approved?
I've looked at the flat slide top ones, which is what my best friend has. Then they have some others that have the flat top and the vents only come up, I believe, eighteen inches.
Right, I think there's several that make the slanted top.
Yeah, but my concern again is, we had so much runoff the other night. What would be the difference between a flat top and six inches of water coming over a small raised top? That's just a door, like the old time, but they're flat. They're not angled. And I, I have real concerns about that. I mean, I have a nine-year-old son. He will be our only child because of issues and it concerns me.
Well, again, it sounds like probably if you just get with Elizabeth and take it to the, the, um, the board of adjustment, and they can look at where you live and the flooding problems and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Because that's something we haven't talked about before. I mean, we never thought about, you know, getting eighteen inches of rain, you know, and.
Yeah, and, and I do realize that that's not a common occurrence, but I mean, it does happen, you know, and.
Happen once.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
Well, if you would just get with Elizabeth and, and go to figure out how that process, what that process is, and they'll take care of you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Anyone signed up? Okay, item B is items from the city councilor trustees.
I would, uh, like to say that I received a phone call from a very angry gentleman. Kind of use that term loosely there. Um, that was very upset about not being allowed in his neighborhood after the tornado went through. And I completely understand that. You know, we, we all wanted to get back in. I, I was told that I wouldn't be allowed in or out. I even showed my ID badge, you know? So, what I just want to say to those people that may have had those problems, that there, there are reasons. You know, we had, I, I talked to, um, someone in our, in our, um, emergency department today, and we had gas leaks in some of our neighborhoods as recently as yesterday. And so, there are safety issues. People were still being recovered. People were missing for days and days and days. So I want everyone to understand that, you know, there, there were reasons that people were not allowed in. But we do take it very seriously, and, and we did want to get, get people back in as soon as possible. And understand, we were working with dozens and dozens of different departments, hundreds and hundreds of different officers. And there was no possible way that we could have flawless communication. So, I, I understand that there, people were upset, but understand that, you know, we, we did the best we could, and I think our, to our, our two chiefs in the back, thank you very much for, I've heard some stories that, of things that our police officers and firemen had to deal with and had to do that involve children and people that lost their lives. And I just want to say thank you very much. You guys did an outstanding job, and even though there were hiccups, I think there were hiccups that were easily fixed. But I just want to say, on behalf of every, you know, everyone I know, thank you so much for the wonderful job you guys did. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have a couple of quick things. And since we're talking about shelters, there's been, uh, talk, and I've gotten an email about requiring shelter, shelters in new homes versus volunteer, and I don't know, we need to have a lot of discussion on that, but city staff or Steve Eady, if y'all could begin looking at that and, uh, maybe present to us your thoughts on it as far as, uh, I think the email I got were the concerns that it might, uh, make us not be competitive price-wise in homes. I don't know, but in light of everything that's happened here, that's going to come before us, and if you guys could just kind of be ready to provide us with some information and some feedback on that, that'd be awesome.
Part of that came about because I made this statement. We, we should consider putting mandatory storm shelters in apartments on any new construction of apartments or senior citizen centers or any assisted living centers. Because they don't really have a choice to put a cellar or whatever in their place. And I think that's kind of up to us to maybe look at that and discuss it. But that was my proposal and it got taken out and it's like, we're going to do it in individual houses, and that's not true. We're not making them do that, so. But we could discuss it, so.
I actually just, I'll defend the mayor on that. I actually happened to walk in on his interview.
Yeah.
And she did really twist what he was saying to a little bit more. One of the issues, though, is if we require those at this point, we draw a line now and say we're going to require those, the insurance companies aren't going to pay for those because it was under code requirement with the date of the storm. So these people are going to be at two or three thousand dollars out of their pocket in order to move back into their own homes. So I think we'd, even though I love the concept of everybody having a s- s- storm shelter, um, I think we would have a lot of heat requiring people to pay for that out of their pocket.
Yeah.
Well, it'd probably be a good selling point, too, if the guys are building homes, you know, it's definitely a wise investment.
Well, I've had several builders tell me that they won't build a home here unless they put one in now. And they, they intend to build them with, with those in the house. So I applaud those builders.
Absolutely. And just something that has, um, and Elizabeth, I'm not trying to catch you off guard, but we had talked about Cleveland Heights, and you had indicated that there was a moratorium out there on any building, and some of the concerns of, uh, now that, um, city water and sewer and things can be extended over there, there could possibly be some development along Twelfth Street. And I don't know, Mr. Eady, if it's something that we could possibly, that moratorium is going to run out. I don't know if we could maybe possibly extend that in light of, uh, the tornado and her apartment and inspectors and everybody else. We're going to be incredibly busy, uh, with all of this new stuff that's going on. If we could, uh,
I think that's probably a good, a good idea because not only of what's going on right now, but there's, we still haven't had an opportunity to get everybody, you all together in a study session at some point. And, you know, make some determinations as to whether we want to proceed or not with anything out there.
Okay. Well, if, if, I guess if y'all can look into it, if that's something we can do, that'd be great, and maybe put it on the agenda and.
We will do that.
One more thing and I'll be done. Uh, I would like for us, maybe as a council, to, uh, there've been a lot of different entities and other, uh, state government and nonprofits putting together, fundraisers or, uh, to help those affected by the storm. We've had a, a lot of people, and the majority of the people in this storm were, were here in Moore. If there's something that we as a council, we as a, uh, might be able to do to, um, ensure that that funding, uh, is here to help our citizens and other cities, I, you know, hope they may consider doing the same thing to help theirs. But when it's, you know, raised from another entity that outside of here, there's not a whole lot that we can do other than ask or encourage people to go through the process to get funds to help them with the storm shelters or whatever. Uh, and I don't know if there's something that we as a council might want to do to, um, help our citizens and to ensure that the monies that are raised, and if there's somebody looking to contribute, might come here and then we can come up with a process so that citizens can apply for grants or whatever to, to help them.
Let me address that, Mark. Um, one thing is, there's gonna, there's a, there's a long-term recovery group that's being put together that's actually going to be headed, I think, by the Red Cross. Um, a lot of these entities, the large entities, Red Cross and others, have gotten significant donations to the point where they're going to be, I think, able to, in this storm, probably do a longer period of longer-term recovery that maybe than in a lot of other storms. And, and a lot of social service agencies, but also the city of Moore is going to be a part of that in terms of the meetings down the road, in terms of, uh, if there's any gaps for our citizens, any areas of, um, need that our citizens have that we see. I think we're going to have some influence in being able to take those needs to this group. Uh, and one of the things that I have mentioned is, and we're talking about probably millions of dollars that this group's going to have.
Right, right.
One of the things that I've mentioned to them very directly is that I think that we want to see our citizens eligible for at least some funding to help with them when they go back in and put a storm shelter or safe room in the houses in the rebuilt in the storm area. I think that's been well received. The city, I don't know, Cheryl, do you know how much money we've received so far?
It was right now, it's probably about nine thousand dollars. Ninety?
Ninety thousand dollars. The city's received quite a bit of money. I think we will continue to get some. Um, I know there's some out there that, I mean, we haven't received yet. And, and I think a possible use for some of that money would be determining some way to, uh, partially fund folks with storm shelters. And there may be other needs and some other things that you all need to decide. That'll be a decision you make, but, uh, I'm going to do everything I can to, that when these monies are out there, if we can get some of it, I want to see these safe rooms put in.
Right.
I kind of like the idea that of having people or allowing people to get some assistance to put them in, because they're fairly expensive, but, you know, they're so expensive. I mean, they're, they're, they're needed.
I think the, that's the cheapest one you can get is about three thousand dollars, which isn't a lot of money, but for a lot of people, that, that's a significant amount of money. Um, and, and I'd love to see every one of the eight hundred houses that were destroyed, uh, here, have one whenever they get rebuilt.
I've looked at some nice ones today that were priced at twenty-five hundred dollars, and they were nice. They ran from twenty-five to thirty-five or so.
They had garage types or?
Yeah.
So tha- that opportunity is out there. Um, so we're definitely going to be a part of that.
Okay, well, uh, we'd count on you to, to help with that and to, you know, be our advocate and.
We may need a little bit of political muscle after a while, but right now, we're, we've got our foot in the door and, and they know what we want.
I think people just get frustrated, and that's why some said it directly to the city, is just some of the other nonprofits, you know, a lot, some of that money has to go to their overhead. Uh, and I think people like to see as much as possible go to the, the people, the victims, the hurting people, and if, if there's, if we can do that through the Red Cross, wonderful, or if we need to do that on our own, then let's take the lead and let's do it.
In essence, if we do it on our own, then we've got to set up another, I hate to use the term, bureaucratic process to handle those type of things, because present staff has all they can say grace over right now. And so, uh, we'd be in the position, but maybe look at those mon- money for some overhead expenses.
We, uh, Randy and I have talked this afternoon. There's, there's a, a lot of stuff that we can and can't do as a municipality due basically not only to, um, Oklahoma Constitution. We can't give out cash monies. We can't give out gifts. So we're going to look at what we can do and how to distribute those monies, because right now, we're very limited in what we can actually do with them. So, but we're going to look on, we're trying to figure out how to do it, not how not to do it. So we're going to, we're going, hopefully, we can get the AG's office to sign off on it so we can actually do some of these things. And, uh, we can get some of these other entities to join us to match our funds or whatever, match theirs.
The, uh, the trust or the foundation that was being set up by the legislators.
That's, that's one of the things we talked about.
I think that was for the schools. No primary was.
Yeah, they want, they want to do school.
Exactly, for the schools, yeah. But we could do something similar, maybe set up for residents.
And they, they have already agreed to help us any way we need help on. They can't change the constitution, but they can help with, you know, the AGs.
And these, and these, these funds are, are being set aside in a separate account. They're not co-mingled with the city funds now. And, I mean, the account's in our name, but they're not city funds per se, so.
I just, I, and I, I think, I probably speak for all of us, we wanna see the victims get the money. That's the bottom line. So, it's they, they need the money. So we wanna help them rebuild.
And, you know, Terry may be able to speak to this, but we'll find people, and probably a lot of them, who are a little under insured.
Yeah.
And there's a gap there that they're gonna need some help on.
I agree.
Biggest thing I'm seeing is people that were in rental houses and apartments that didn't have any coverage. We're seeing a lot of that.
Yeah.
And I would, and this, I said the last thing, but this is the last thing. And Mr. Kraus said it, but I also wanna thank just all of the city staff and just all of the men and women that helped, that, that everybody knew what to do. When that, that horrendous storm, tornado, came through our community, everyone knew what it was that they were supposed to do. And everyone went out and did it. And just, what I heard from FEMA is that the lessons that we've learned from previous storms, we've put those lessons into, into practice. And you hate to be good at something, but when things happen, everyone knows what it is that they need to do. And I know what it's like when somebody, an elected official, whatever, says, well, we really appreciate you and every, yeah, yeah, right, right, right. But man, we really do. And I know that you guys couldn't do the job that you did if you didn't have, have awesome people. And of course, we're just thinking police and fire, but just everybody, you know, water and animal control and sanitation, just all of it. It's just, it was so overwhelming. And this city functioned almost without missing a beat. Things happened. And thank you, please thank all of you guys so much. And it's an honor to get to be a part of this council and a part of this leadership. So thank you guys.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Sure. Come on up. We have pretty much an open government here, so we let everybody speak. He can speak twice most of the time.
The new park that you're building over here on Broadway?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you build a shelter in there for people that gets caught out in it? We were caught out. We were just coming back from Best Buy, my wife and I, and we got caught at the library. And we were hunkered down in the hallway there in the library.
We would love to, but the cost, the cost for that would be more than the cost of the park. And that's the problem. Not only that, but federal guidelines basically prohibit it unless you have ADA accessibility, which means elevators.
Oh, really?
So we don't have, and if anything goes out, it's electricity. So that's why most communities have eliminated their public shelters.
Oh.
So they get sued for ADA violations. And that's the sum of it.
Oh.
It's cost. It's just about the money. And it's like, you'd have to put a city underground. And that's pretty hard to do. You get sixty-five thousand people. And the last thing you wanna do is get out on the road, as we saw, most of the, most of the deaths were caused by people out on the road. And I can say this from the last time, 'cause Scott Singer and I found the lady, the last lady found, we found her next to the bridge. She had bounced out. She recorded this on her own camera. She was a camera chaser, or a storm chaser. And she bounced like a ping pong ball underneath that bridge. She was sucked out. But her and her husband and little baby were storm chasing.
At the intersection right up here in Moore?
And, and we tell everybody, do not get out and do not be a storm chaser if you are not qualified or certified to do that. Stay home. And it's like, you put everybody in jeopardy when you get out there on the road and you crash, 'cause other people have to come and save you. And we don't want that.
Well, we were, we were out shopping, you know. Got caught on the way home.
Yeah. And we've talked about this before, and one fear is that if you have a shelter like that for the, you know, city, it can only hold so many people. You know, what happens when, you know, ten, ten thousand people show up and it only holds four thousand? You know, now you have six thousand people standing outside. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough situation. You know, you're right. It'd be nice if we had one, but it's just, it's scary for people to be out and about, you know?
I would've gone if we had one, for sure.
Well, we would've too, that day. We were looking for one, you know.
Yeah. It's tough, I know.
But everybody is basically closing theirs instead of opening new ones. One, you shouldn't be out on the road. That's, that's just the bottom line. I don't have a storm shelter at my house. I'm gonna get one. But I think everybody up here probably agrees with that. You don't have one, get one. Especially if you're gonna stay here. So it's just the thing to do, right?
Get one and put it in your front yard.
My, my neighbors wouldn't allow that, so.
The Board of Adjustment's gonna be busy.
Yes, the Board of Adjustment is gonna be busy. Anybody else?
Yeah. Brooke, just, I'll try to be quick. One, FEMA didn't always get the best shake on this thing. I keep hearing how awesome FEMA has been on this storm.
Lee, stand up and take a bow. Lee is our direct representative to FEMA, and he's here every day. He was here till, longer than I was here on Friday night after the last storm of, set of events. And he's been spectacular to work with.
And I visited with a friend of mine that's on Oklahoma City, works for Oklahoma City. He had said the same thing about FEMA with them. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody heard that, and we do appreciate the work that you guys are doing. So I thought this was kind of a cool deal. A friend of mine was in Jacksonville, Florida this week, this last week. He brings back this card group, this musical group called Buck and the Gunshot Something. Anyway, they, they had this musical, Music for Oklahoma benefit in Jacksonville, Florida. Five bucks to get in. I understand they raised seventeen hundred bucks. There's a check coming to the City of Moore for seventeen hundred bucks file from, from this outfit. I thought that was kinda cool.
That is.
We've had any number of those that have done these things all over the country and have sent the checks in or are, gonna, I got two calls today about something like that that they have done or are going to do. It's just been amazing, the response.
I think it was Flower Mountain, Texas, that city. They, for three days, if you'd like, bring a gift card by. We'll take it up to Moore, and they raised over twelve thousand dollars in gift cards. So the, it's just, it has been amazing, just the generosity. And I made a joke the other day, is anybody know where I can get a bottle of water at in Moore? Just go outside and you'll find one. It's so much.
But you're right. I'm helping the school system clean up all the properties, you know, kind of having charge of that. And we did the high school last week, and we had a busload of kids from UConn show up, kids from Edmund, you know, all over the place showing up to help clean. Our campus is more Oklahoma, you know?
Great.
Eric, let's say one thing?
Sure.
The, well, I thought was really awesome about this, this, it's all volunteers that showed up.
Yes.
And the really cool part of it was that when we got hit Friday night, Saturday morning, with all of those volunteers that were already here, by eight-thirty, there was an army in the parking lot out here. And I, I think those folks were from Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 'cause I saw like three vehicles out front. And they just had, they had it all cleaned up from Friday night's storm. They had it cleaned up by like ten o'clock on Saturday. It, it was the coolest thing I've ever seen. So the volunteers have been awesome.
I think we had ten thousand volunteers on Saturday. So that showed up. So it's, it's been amazing. Anybody else have anything you'd like to talk?
I'd just like to say one thing before we sit down. I'd like to thank Galen Kitch for his years of service with the City of Moore. And in the time that I was employed with Moore and since I've been on the council, I've heard nothing but good things from other emergency managers, other towns wishing they had such emergency management at their disposal in the event of a disaster or emergency. So I'd like to thank, personally thank Galen Kitch for all the work that he has done in seeing that this city is storm-ready. Thank you, Galen.
I'd echo that, too. Okay. I have a lot of people to thank. And first of all, I'd like to start out with my city council. You guys have been tremendous. Everywhere I go, I see you out there. And Mark actually drove me around for two years now. Seems like two years, but it's only been two weeks. But it was, it was exciting to be able to get into the areas I couldn't get in because he has a sheriff's truck, and we probably tore up the sheriff's truck going around. And visiting with people and, you know, we, we just talked to people, looked at everything. We saw everybody out there just about. We saw people that would go from one property and they, the, the crowd would get bigger and they would just go to the next and clean up the yard next to them. And it was, it was just pretty incredible to see all that. And this was right after it happened. And the citizens, I wanna say thank you to all the citizens who put up with this. I know you didn't get back in your houses in, in what I would consider an appropriate time, but I know that there were several looters who we arrested that were out there before you were. And, you know, that's one of the things that they were trying to prevent. When these happen, we had the National Guard, Army National Guard, we had Air Force National Guard, who were under strict orders from the governor not to let anybody in. We had Highway Patrol, who don't take orders from anybody but the governor. They had orders not to let anybody in. So it wasn't just our department. We had officials from all over, Enid Police Officers, Guthrie Police Officers, Norman Officers. Everybody was so generous to send us police officers to make sure that your stuff was protected. And sometimes they got overzealous. And I'll be the first to admit that. They wouldn't let me in a couple of places. And, you know, it, it just happens that way, and that's unfortunate. And I wanna apologize to those people that were put out and, you know, with the city and stuff. But i- if you were really upset about it and you were put out, you're probably not from here anyway. So with that being said, I'd like to thank the President of the United States for personally coming down. The governor, I mean, this lady was great. She was out Saturday before. She was out in Shawnee, Beth Lake, her old hometown down there. And her staff told me that she was out there, you know, basically all night. She came here, the first eighty-four hours, we were still looking for people. She was out there all but about six hours the whole time. And what an outstanding person. We had our state legislatures who basically, basically got us forty-five million dollars to help work on the state side to appropriate money for cleanup for Oklahoma and Moore in particular. Have all those guys to think they're, they're awesome. They did a fantastic job. Let's see, who else? You know, I, I had to give a speech the other day before this Blake Shelton concert. Blake Shelton and all the musicians who showed up, they did a really good job. And, but I felt guilty being there because there were so many people, you know, just back, didn't even have houses or televisions to watch. And one of the things that I remember, one of the things I said basically was, when we have a tornado in Moore, everybody becomes a first responder. Nobody sleeps, nobody goes home till the last person is found. Thank you. That's all I can do.
Well, we have an awesome city and appreciate your leadership over the years, Mayor.
Thank you.
Another person you didn't mention, but was here throughout most of that first week, was our Congressman, Tom Cole.
Absolutely. I just didn't get that far before. And it's like, I haven't had a chance to grieve. I haven't had time.
But I think he was listening, watching, looking, and will be there further down the road when we need some more assistance.
We, I got to ride in the presidential limo with Congressman Cole and Mary Fallon. And the congressman pointed out to him that we had been in that presidential limousine four or five times with different presidents from the Mura bombing on. And he pointed out to the president in a joking way, he said, "Mr. President, you're the new guy on our team." So we've done this before. And he, the president was so nice to us. And he said, you know, the FEMA director, he said, he told me that morning after, he said, "Look out the window, you'll see him. He's flying around in the air above you." And he said, "Is there anything else I can get you going?" And I said, "Ham sandwich would be good." And he said, he said, "Ask the director. He's always got one." So I asked him, and he said, "That sounds just like him, but I just ate it." So, anyway, that was, that was kinda tough. And, you know, we had so many people to think, like I said, we got OGN, OEC, all the volunteers. And I tell you, who's, who's just really risen above the crowd was the churches. All the churches took in people. They provided meals, just everything. So I appreciate all that they've done. And anybody else? Okay.
Yes, sir.
One group that I was so impressed with came to town, Oklahoma Highway Department and Oklahoma Turnpike Authority.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much.
I have never seen so many highway department trucks descend on one spot in my life. They hand-raked yards. The citizens were amazed. It was an impressive sight.
Thank you. I forgot to mention him. Gary Ridley, who's Secretary of Transportation. Every highway truck that they owned, including every one of the Turnpike Authority, was here with the exception of one truck which wouldn't start. They were all here. And I don't know how many vehicles they had, but there was probably well over a hundred of them, every one that they owned. And we do appreciate them so much. And Steve, your crew, I mean, you know, you talk about driving through power lines that are still hooked up. That's not good, but I appreciate you.
And just how, how, you know, we didn't, Oklahomans, people from more, the Oklahomans, we didn't, we didn't wait. We're incredibly grateful for FEMA, but we didn't wait for FEMA to come here and save us. Everybody knew what to do, and they started doing it. And within days, people were putting the debris out by the street. And so everyone knew what to do. And we, we're taking care of ourselves independent.
And I'm sure I left somebody out, so I'll just say thank you to everybody. And with that, I'll suck it up. I'll go to item twenty-two, executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, considering if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style William Thompson individually and as the legal guardian and ex-friend of Teresa Solis, a minor child versus Sonia Bigwip individually and the City of Moore, CJ two zero one one dash one six one, excuse me, one seven six one, and authorization for legal counsel staff to make action as, to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendant as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Do we have a motion?
I make motion to convene to executive session.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cappner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're convening to executive session. Thank you.
Todd Jensen, Todd, before you leave.
We can go to our session.
What's up?